County Commission Staff Meeting, May 14th, 2024. I'll ask the people in the dais to introduce themselves.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerold-Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon. I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Alito, County Administrator.
Charlie Anes, Prosecutor's Office.
I'm Hamilton County Commission Board President Alicia Reese. Okay, we'll get to our agenda. We have one item, the environmental update. Holly, are you gonna start us off, or Jeff, did you wanna say something first? Okay, Holly Christman?
Great, well, thank you. I am so excited to be here in front of you today to talk about our sustainability efforts that the county has had over numerous years. And I think, I hope I'm not the only one to state this, but I think this is one of our best-kept secrets, which is how much our county does when it comes to environmental conservation and sustainability. And so, the secret's gonna be out today, that we're gonna start sharing our successes a little bit better, starting with this year, with this report that we're gonna give today. We have a few people I'll introduce you to, to help provide this report. I will say, before we begin, though, while we're highlighting 2023 results, many of these projects are the result of work done, gosh, even over the past 20 years, Ralph, culminating in some of the results that you'll see today. And I will also say that it's not just the folks you'll hear from today that have been a part of this. For example, you'll hear about our EV charging. That's thanks to Joe Feldcamp and all the parking staff to get EV charging in all of our garages, for example. So, I think sustainability really is a team effort, and I hope you'll see that reflected today. So, first up, you're gonna hear from Ralph Linney, Director of Hamilton County Facilities. And then, secondly, you'll hear from Brad Johnson, Director of Hamilton County Environmental Services. So, Ralph's gonna talk about all of the great work that Facilities has been doing in what I call the forgotten fuel, which is energy efficiency, in all of our buildings, especially considering how old our buildings are. And then, Brad will talk about EV charging, as well as waste reduction and air quality. And then, we'll wrap it up by introducing you to the newest member of the county team, and the forward-looking projects that we're glad she's here, because there's a lot of work that we have on our plate to project our efforts to even greater levels. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ralph Linney to talk about energy efficiency and the facilities projects.
Good afternoon. This is one of the things, now, the problem is, do you have about two or three hours? Because I can talk about this that long. Also, let you know, I put in the boxes for the commissioners and county administrations the latest Energy Management Report, or Energy Management Report for 2023. It's about 65 pages long, so I will not, I will do a short summary probably here during this presentation. But any questions on that, you or your staff people feel free to contact me so we can explain what we have in there, and the successes that's been accomplished over the last year and 20-plus years. Energy Star, we are very fortunate that, over the years, we were able to benchmark our buildings. We started probably back in about 2002. To, if I got permission, to go ahead and put the buildings into the U.S. Energy Star program. We've used outside consultant all those years, because the documentation has to be documented with a professional engineer who actually evaluates what's been done, follow the criteria. And as a result, we have averaged five to seven buildings a year receiving the Energy Star Award. I use this as a benchmark to make sure that her energy efficiency is correct, the building is being managed properly by our building manager, and identify improvements that's needed during the capital process that reduces the cost of operating new equipment, and making sure that we're having state-of-the-art that fits properly in the operations, such as at the jail or at the coroner's facility, where we design stuff at a high standard for the new building. Presently, we have five buildings. Two of them are rated very high. Amson Depke is in the 97% bracket. That means there's only three buildings last year had better energy efficiency in the country that applied to the program. A-hundred Broadway usually is my highest, but this year it was 90, which means it was in the top 10% of the buildings in the country. A-hundred Broadway is my pride and joy. It was the first building that we received about 16 years ago Energy Star Award. It was the first county, well, it's been, there was one building other than mine that was earlier, that was a government building, it was a federal building up in Cleveland. And the county actually up there had some space leased in it. But as a county, or state building, or township, or city building, this is the longest continuous building in the state of Ohio, government building, to receive an Energy Star Award every year. That goes to my excellent staff who maintains the building, to my assistant directors who make sure what is done is done correctly. The other thing that we did when we decided to build the new coroner's facility, we wanted to make sure that we were taking care of sustainability. We wanted to make sure during construction, anything that could be recycled was recycled. There's a large point system that had to be done, that they were going to continue to do recycling. The coroner committed to that, of anything that can be placed in the bins to be done. We had to make certain commitments for water, how it would be taken care of in the parking lot, so it doesn't puddle, it goes down to the ground. And we went through a lot of items that made sure we got our certification from the area of sustainability. So, we are very proud to get that certification. When you do sustainability, and you do it correctly, you will have a reduction in the usage of natural gas, and the usage of electricity, and then, the usage of water. We've been very successful in those areas. In 2023, we finished our last phase with an energy conservation program with Amaresco and Thermotech Engineering. The last phase was replacing LED lights in a lot of the buildings, and bringing up to new technology over the time period. So, we have seen a reduction in our usage in 2023, which is reflected. In fact, in each of the three categories, it's the lowest that we have used since 2012. I got the right year. This is important, because it shows a trend, the success and the money that the commissioners invested in the capital program, looking at the return on investment that was done with the Budget Office to make sure these phases that we did would make sense. As a result, we have made the planet, the environment, better. We have saved the taxpayers' money, and we have improved the efficiency of maintaining the equipment we have. Any questions in my section?
Opening up, Vice President Dreehouse.
Have you finished with your section, Ralph?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness.
Record time.
I know, well, I, I.
You caught me off guard.
Yeah, you missed about the 65 pages.
Yeah, nice.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
There we go, one more.
I got hung up on the money part.
All right, I'm gonna hold my question until after the last slide.
Okay. The other thing that comes with this, one of the advantages of doing the EPA energy reports, it keeps track of the greenhouse gas emissions and what's been reduced. So, we have all that documentation for the buildings that Facilities has maintained, going back to when I first really started, probably about 2010, when we really started having all the buildings put into the system that we, that the county maintains, where they qualify to get an award or not, such as a justice center will never qualify. Year 2020, there's not enough of those type of facilities for the EPA to basically give you an award. They do keep track of the number, we know how efficient we are. And also, we can keep track of the greenhouse gas emissions reductions that we've had. So, that's been a side benefit. Maybe it's the main benefit as to the results of covering everything, saving money, saving natural resources, improving the environment. So, now, I'm finishing, and we saved $32 million since I've been here. That includes the cost of going out and bidding out the natural gas and electric power versus the standard rates, on top of the energy conservation. And you'll can see the breakdown in the huge report I gave you about an hour ago as to what is energy conservation, and what was from the rates reductions. Now, I finish.
Well, Ralph, before you leave, they may have some questions for you. Let me just, I wanna start off by saying, you've done a lot of great work. When you look at this $32 million saved taxpayers' money, you have been on this energy conservation for a long time. And a lot of times, like I said, it doesn't get a lot of fanfare, but now, everybody's, you know, wanna, it's a lot of fanfare now, but you've been at it for a long time, and we've kind of been a leader, but just doing the work more quietly. So, just wanna thank you, thank you for that. And with that, I'm gonna open it up for questions, so don't go anywhere, Vice President Dreehouse.
Thank you. Thanks, Ralph, for the presentation. So, I too wanna congratulate you, not only on all the awards, but the longevity of the work and the results. $32 million is a lot of money to save over that timeframe. And so, thank you for being a forerunner in this category. So, you talked, when you talk about energy efficiency, and you mentioned switching out the lights, this room is a good example, I think, of switching out lights to become more energy efficient in this one room alone, and then the lobby, and some of the other things that we've done up here on the sixth floor. But you also have other categories beyond electricity, which are natural gas usage and water usage. Can you give us an example in both of those categories as to how we got to these reductions?
In the category of natural gas, we had a lot of old boilers that was very inefficient in the usage of natural gas. As such, as we start to replace them, during the process with Amaresco, I had my building managers meet with Amaresco and Thermotech and say, "These are the ones that are old, these are the ones that cost us a lot of money to maintain." A good example would be this building, as an example. We went from large boilers down to compact boilers, which uses probably about 30% less natural gas than in the past. The efficiency's better. The other side of benefit is the maintenance is less on them, to be taken care of. Plus, they can be controlled through a building automation system. And if something needs to be changed, which we could in the past, the building managers can do that from their laptop, wherever they may be, if there's a situation. The other thing with the lighting, as an example, we don't have to replace the lights every two years. So, as a result, we're saving money there on the product, as well as the time that now I have my staff able to do other work that's needed in the buildings, instead of walking around changing all the lights. In the water, just go into the restroom, you'll see the changes that we have there, where you have, put your hand under the faucet, the water comes out, the toes, as they flush. Those were things, other areas we looked at, it was the cooling towers, as where we could change the meteor type of water being used, and meteor, in a different way that we gotta reduce rates and costs from the Cincinnati Water Works, along with reducing the amount of usage of water that was needed by modernizing our cooling towers.
Great, thank you. It really helps us better understand, I think, what, what you've done.
There's, there's a long list in the back of that report of everything we've done.
All right, well, I'll read the report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Dumas. Thank you for your presentation. And I did take a glance at your report before I came in, but it's always a great report. I'm gonna call you the $32 million man from now on. But anyway, as we look at the buildings, a lot of people think, because the buildings are old, we can't do anything to make them better. And so, when you talk about our five buildings, other than the coroner's office, what is the age of our other buildings that we have?
Probably averages about 80 years old.
That's what I thought, okay. So, that's, that's a great job. And you talked about the EV charging systems in all the garages. How do you determine how many you're gonna put? I guess it depends on the parking spaces and how large each garage is.
I'm not responsible for that, but the code in Cincinnati determines, when you build a new garage, how many EV stations you're supposed to have. And you also take a look at the usage, such as Joe Feldcamp did at the banks, to determine what they're needed and where they're located to be best.
So, that's a new law, because we just started doing electric vehicles not long ago. It's a new law. How new is it?
I don't know. I, I'm not responsible.
I was trying to stump you, I did, so, okay.
I'm not responsible for Finley Garage. It'd be whenever the city of Cincinnati has updated their building code.
Yeah, this is just a great report and a great work, and you always do, and it really helps us.
Well, I'm not the one, I have a wonderful staff.
Well, I know that, yeah.
Who has a vision.
Sure.
And one of the reasons we were successful, when I came here in, in 2001, an energy conservation study was done by the previous director. We followed up with that. When we got a grant with Rebuild America, we updated it. We won an award from the governor for doing that. And then, we followed up when we started doing the Amaresco projects. We updated the plan, and we've been following it since then. And then, as needed, we critique it as the buildings get older and the systems will have to be replaced in the future.
Great, well, I will say, we all need our staff. But as you present, you're a great presenter and a great compliment to your staff and how you present the information, very simply, and I can appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Madam Commissioners, it's always a pleasure to be here. I especially appreciate the support you've provided in the five years I've been in this role. And today, I'm probably the most excited I've been that I've ever come down here. So, we'll kind of get into why that is, but it's, Holly will be talking more about the next steps, but that's why I'm so excited, is where we're going. So, Ralph did talk about, you know, the responsibility for EV charging, and that has been a little bit of a challenge for the county, because it does fall between multiple departments. So, if you remember, last year, I came down here and sat with you, and we discussed the, we had an exploratory committee to start looking at this. And this slide is more to look at where we are right now. And the good news is, we're not starting from scratch, right? We have done a lot with EV charging infrastructure already, especially in the parking garages. And then, we also started through that exploratory committee last year at the existing 911 facility up in, off of Hamilton Avenue. We're having four Level 2 chargers put in up there, and we're about halfway through that process right now. If you remember back, that is, we partnered with OKI, an Ohio Department of Transportation, for a pilot study. And so, so far, so good. We were the first ones, so we're working with ODOTs pretty closely to make sure that process goes seamlessly. So, I would like to say it's been perfect, but being that it's the first project, it is taking a little bit. We're about a month behind where I would have liked to have been, but it is moving forward, so we're very excited about that as well. All right, waste reduction, the good news there is, we continue to be the leader in the state of Ohio, at least in the urban, I can't speak for rural counties. But I'm just so proud of the staff and what we've accomplished. And I know Commissioner Dreehouse is very familiar with this, being on the Solid Waste Policy Committee. And, you know, this, I only have three bullet. And, you know, this, I only have three bullet points up here, but they're very, very powerful. And we, you know, could talk about many, many programs. But really wanted to talk about the 56% waste diversion from the landfill. Again, we continue to lead the state of Ohio. And that's, I mean, we're going up against some pretty heavy hitters up at Cuyahoga County, Franklin County, and up in the Toledo area. So that's something that we should all be proud of here in Hamilton County, that we continue to lead the way on that. And the next two bullet points are so powerful that if you weren't aware, at the Duke Energy Center here in Cincinnati, we actually had the Midwest Regional Sustainability Summit. And two of the panels highlighted the work we're doing right here in Hamilton County. So I'm super proud of that. I asked the, the staff this morning if that's ever happened before, and they thought about it and said, no. You know, we think that this is the first time that a county government agency has had two panels represented at that sustainability summit. And that, that is, that's a very big summit. It's very prestigious. And that's something that isn't taken lightly. So that's something else we should be very proud of. So I've talked about this in the past, but we created the 513 certification, like green certification program. And through that and other programs, we actually, Hamilton County helped out 60 businesses and schools start recycling programs. And that's huge because, you know, we think that a lot of schools are already doing these things and businesses are doing it. But there are a lot that are not. And if you get out and you see these things, what we've done is we've put it as an incentive to businesses to where we will help promote their business as being a green business. So we have that certification program and the staff has just done a fantastic job. And really, I see that program as I come to you in the future years, it'll be even bigger number than 60. So again, that was highlighted as an example of what other sustainability initiatives throughout the country should be doing. And I'm very proud that we had that opportunity. The, the third one, this is something, again, and I know this is really big on Commissioner Dumas's agenda. She's mentioned, you've mentioned it many times, and thank you for doing that, is really focusing in on food rescue, composting, the organic side of waste. Because there's a lot of area where we can make improvement there. So last year, we had the pleasure of awarding almost, we were slightly under $600,000 for grant funds in those areas. And Commissioner Drew House, I know you mentioned that, I think, about a month ago. I let the staff know, so I'm very appreciative of your comments. And we're very proud of that as well. So thank you for mentioning that. Air quality, you know, we've talked about this. We, we continue to be the leading local air quality agency in the state of Ohio, too. In fact, the highway EPA kind of looks at us as the poster child. When they have questions and they're not even sure of the answer, they call us for Southwest Ohio Air Quality Agency. And so just to kind of remind you that for that program, we do five counties. So it's not just Hamilton County. We also do Butler, Warren, Clinton, and Claremont County as well. And you can see here, really what we wanted to do was, this is the area, and this is, I've mentioned this every year I've been down here to talk to you. Given the geography of where we're located here in the greater Miami Valley, you know, Mill Creek Valley, we do have, unfortunately, you know, geological or a geology situation where the air sometimes, especially in the summer, does, you get like a heat inversion and it keeps a lot of those pollutants in the valley. And what happens when that occurs is we really struggle with particulate matter. That's what PM stands for. 2.5 is the measurement. The easiest way to explain it, it's very, it's much smaller than a human hair. So those fine particulate, really the easiest way to explain it would be last year with the wildfire. So our particular PM counts went way up during that. And I think I was down here and explaining to you that we may go out of attainment because of that. The good news is we remain in attainment. The bad news is the green, as you can see, is the 2012 standard. And you can see, we are just hugging that line with the white and where we've been. So you can see, we do continue to make improvements. Here's the bad news, but I look at it as good news because I like a challenge. And I, I'm all about, I came from public health prior to this role. And I really think that health-based standards have a lot in terms of making sure we have good public health and we protect the environment. So EPA did change. It went from 12 micrograms per meter cubed down to nine, and that just started this season. So the way that they determine whether you're in compliance or not, they look at the last three years. It's a little more complicated than that, but the reason I'm telling you this is I would not be surprised if we do slip out of attainment here over the next two or three years. And that's going to be the case for all of Ohio, quite frankly. It's going to be very difficult to reach that new standard. But again, I love the challenge, you know, and that's why we're here today. I think we're, we're gonna have a lot of new programs. And really focusing, focusing in on sustainability is going to be the key to our success when we start looking at this. EVs, you know, a part of that. Building efficiency is a part of that. There are so many, you know, looking at solar, there are so many programs, especially with the current federal administration right now, that they're getting that funding out. And that's where a lot of those opportunities have come in, and we've been able to tap into those. And Holly will talk more about that. The other thing that you've been a very big proponent for us is the, the $100 gift card for electric mowers. A lot of people don't realize that mowers actually put out more pollution than cars do. Not overall, not volume, but if you actually just factor in that mower next to like an individual car, they do put out a lot more pollution because you don't have those emission controls that they have on vehicles. So what that program has done is it does make a pretty substantial impact. And we've had people on your staff take advantage of that, so I'm very thankful for that. That, actually, this was the third year that we started that, or we've run that program. It was so successful this year, it, it's already run out for the year, the funding. So I was just talking with the staff this morning, and we are looking at opportunities again to bring that back again next spring. And even looking at potentially going outside of just mowers, not saying we're gonna do this, but we're exploring maybe looking at other power equipment that puts out more pollution. Example would be the older style, non-electric weed eaters and power equipment like that. Usually those engines are two cycles, so they use oil and gas and they burn as part of that process oil, which puts a lot of contaminants in the air in the peak season when we don't want it, right? During the growing season and during the sunlight, which is when ozone and particulate matter is especially an issue. And I will, Holly, and I'll be back up here at the end.
Thanks, Brad. Well, I hope you've seen over the past few slides, this, this beautiful nexus of environmental protection, but also cost savings and also the social benefit in terms of helping to feed people, for example. So I think that's a beauty, hopefully, of what you've recognized today. And we're gonna close it out with just a few more slides of good news and also looking forward. So 2023 was a big year for awards for our team. So you can see the facilities department received the Impact Award from the Midwest Regional Sustainability Summit. I know the board recognized them, I think it was last week or the week before, for that great honor. And then, I mean, Environmental Services really killed it this past year. So they had both all local, state, and national awards for some of their staff. So you see Mary Kropenbaker with the Solid Waste District won a statewide award for Young Professional of the Year. Joy Landry won, from the Hamilton County Conservation District for Communication Award. And Tony Staubach won a National Award. Waste 360 is a national solid waste and recycling trade association. And you can see here, he won for the Food Rescue Advocate of the Year for the 40 Under 40 Award. And if you've ever met Tony, I think you know, this was so well deserved. He is so passionate about this. And then last but not least, Brad mentioned it, the Mo Greener Program did receive recognition from the National Association of Counties. So I would just like that the boards would allow me to recognize and congratulate all the folks that had recognition in the past year for their environmental work. So as we look forward, and I'm probably gonna need some assist from Brad on this, there is, I mean, we could probably talk for a half an hour about upcoming initiatives, both that we're starting to work on now and that will be coming. So I'll just go through a few. First of all, we, we talked about electric vehicle charging. And we are gonna use part of our energy efficiency block grant dollars from the federal government to pull together a roadmap for county EV and county-owned infrastructure. We do have some challenges with our parking lots and things like that. So this will help us get that moving. And as, as Ralph mentioned, with our boilers and replacing those and the impact that's had on our energy usage, the other funding from our, the vast majority of our EECB, CBG dollars will be used to replace the boiler at 230 East 9th. So that again, will help us with energy efficiency going forward. We also, as, as the board knows, the new 911 EMA Center is under renovation. And that will be, is being designed to meet the LEED Silver Standard. So again, more, more green building coming online. I think the board is aware, we do have a letter of intent still in with the County Commissioners Association of Ohio through their energy cooperative to purchase solar electric power. So that's still being worked through. And as the board also is aware, we have partnered with CDF, Cincinnati Business Committee, the Port and City of Cincinnati to explore the formation of a Green Bank, which that report should be coming soon. So keep your eyes out for that. And we also, I think the board is aware, we partnered with OKI, who is leading a grant to develop a climate plan for the region. Environmental Services is, is strong on that partnership. And it was a million dollar grant, I believe, that OKI received to lead this effort that, again, Environmental Services, City of Cincinnati, I think Indiana University is all a part of this group to get this plan started. And Solar For All, this is a newer federal program to increase solar energy in low-income families. And it was just announced that a large, two nonprofits, one state and one nonprofit, received large amounts of federal grant in the Midwest region. So several states in the Midwest. And we're looking at how we can access that money to bring into Cincinnati, potentially through something like a Green Bank. And the most exciting part of the day for me is to turn it over to Brad to introduce Hamilton County's first sustainability manager. She started two weeks ago, I believe, and has a lot, you can see, to fulfill. We have a lot of projects, but a great team to help her along the way. So with that, I'll bring Brad back up and have him introduced Julie.
So as Holly said, the excitement, I may not be showing it, but I am just so excited about this. Because a lot of it has to do with, too, you know, I like to be considered the leader. And I don't like to just stay stagnant and not improve. I've always been big on quality improvement. And when I took this role five years ago, I really saw an opportunity for sustainability in the county. And I looked around at what other counties were doing, and it, it is difficult. So I'm not gonna say we're the first. I think there might be a couple of other technically sustainability managers. But I do know that most of those are, they were like, say, an architect and they just got given the role. They weren't educated to be a sustainability, sustainability manager. So my vision was to eventually have somebody onboard who was an expert, who knew all these initiatives. Because as much as I would like to think I'm an expert in sustainability, and I am in a lot of different areas, I, I'm definitely not on the, the, the cutting edge of some of these things. And, you know, Holly, these, this is a great slide of things that I've worked to get implemented with the expectation that we would get a sustainability manager. And I'm so excited now today to tell you that we have a sustainability manager. And the interview process was just outstanding. We received candidates from literally all over the country. And it was, it wasn't a difficult decision. Julie Donna, which I will give you a little bit of her past, and I'll have her come up if she has a few words that she wants to say. But really, I think that what separated Julie from all the other candidates is, first of all, she's homegrown in Cincinnati. She's from the Fairfield area, a Miami University graduate. And her roots are here, too, career-wise. So Julie started out with Green Umbrella, which I'm sure all three of you are aware of, the, the climate resiliency and what they do. They get national recognition as well. So they, we're very lucky to have Green Umbrella here. So to have that experience under her belt, and then she went from there to the City of Cincinnati Sustainability Office and got to experience work there. And then she got a great opportunity at the City of Louisville. So we lost her for a while down to the state of Kentucky. And she worked down there in their sustainability office. And if you're not familiar, they have a combined metro county government. So she has a lot of experience in different areas. And in her most previous role, she was actually doing even more grassroots things for climate advocacy. So it was just an easy choice. She's very well spoken. We're just so excited to have her onboard. And to be honest with you, she's already keeping me on my toes, right? She's like, I've been kind of holding her back on certain things, like, no, no, we gotta take this a little bit. No, no, I'm ready, let's go. And I'm like, that's what I need. So very excited to announce that Julie has started. And like I said, we have lots of projects. And we'll be keeping you updated on where we are. And President Reese, I wanted to thank you, too. It was, I don't want to say surprising because that's not the right word. But I was very, I admired what you said at the State of the County address and how you brought up this role and what it meant to you. I think that resonated not only with me, but with a lot of people in the community. Because this is, this affects all of us, right? This is, I always like to, I have three kids. And every opportunity I have to talk to them about being a part of something bigger than themselves, whether it be on an athletic team, whether it be being a leader academically or environmentally, or voting. You know, I was just talking to my 15-year-old son last night about, he's like, Dad, I'm just one person. My vote's not gonna, I'm like, no, 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 no. That is exactly the attitude that we don't want to have, and I explained to him why. And sustainability really hits. I, I can honestly say, my, my whole life and career has kind of built to this moment. And I feel like this is gonna be something that I talk to my grandkids and their kids will talk about, that we were the start of bringing a more resilient effort to Hamilton County for things involved with being sustainable. And whether you believe in climate change or not, why not be prepared for it, right? So with that, I will let Julie come up, unless you have questions for me.
I don't think we have questions. I think I want to just say I really appreciate you continuously pushing the envelope. And a lot of times, like you said, we can vote on something, but we have to be able to measure it and to be able to have someone that just stays on top of, because we've got lots of projects that you have brought forward. And yeah, and I, and I've also learned a lot listening to you. But I like the fact that you have brought this issue, I feel, down to the level of the everyday citizen, where they could really understand it. Because like you said, it can get complex. But the things that you have brought forward to us, it's like, here's how it affects the everyday Hamilton County citizen, and why should they care? And how do they get involved? And what does this mean for them? And I think that has been really good. Every time you come, you have some new innovative thing that we're doing. And again, I just feel like as the county, we haven't gotten the credit in terms of what you've done. I mean, we have not been sitting around twiddling our fingers. You know, you have been really out there and doing some very innovative things. And now to have someone, like you said, that has contacts that can help implement the vision and measure it, I think this is so great. So every year, you have like a new thing for us to push that envelope, and I just want to thank you for that. Yeah, Vice President Drew House.
I do have some questions.
Okay, great.
So just in three different areas. One is related to the EV charging stations. So we all sit at these OKI meetings and listen to the grant money that's coming down from the federal government related to this. And it was notable that the money in, for Ohio went unused when it came to some of these grants. And so it makes you, and I've talked to Eric Beck about this a little bit. So explain, you know, what are the challenges related to EV charging stations? And why, why wouldn't that money have been used here? I mean, I, we've done some, I, we were one of the only ones that got money, I think.
Yes.
So, so help us better understand the challenges that exist related to EV charging stations.
There, there are several. If you want to start at the, the basic level is just change, change for drivers going from internal combustion engine to EV. There's all those questions about, well, what's the, the mileage? Will I, you know, like for police cruisers, will I be out and then that will die? So you have to overcome those, the maintenance, you know, because this is gonna be, we have people who've been in maintenance for years. And now instead of dealing with pistons and cam shafts and things like that, now you're dealing with batteries and electric motors. So it is a paradigm shift. And it's not to say that it can't be overcome. It's just that it's, it's a challenge that we need to take on. And the good news is, I think we are close to being there. So that, that's one level. As far as why funding and things didn't occur, I can tell you there's a lot of challenges of the sites themselves. So sometimes the, it requires a Level Three charger. Getting a Level Three charger is, that's the highest. So that's like your quick chargers. That requires electric capacity issues. So you can't just hook up to your local telephone pole and necessarily expect to be able to get a Level Three. And a lot of those had those strings attached, where, for example, at the 911 center, it really was preferred to have Level Three and it just wasn't a possibility up there. So we went with Level Two. So we went with Level 2. Then you have challenges of whether you're looking at the government side or the public side. So if you, some of the EV charging stations require you to have those available to the public. And unfortunately, like for the county, we don't have parking lots that would necessarily be accessible to the public. So you have those challenges. Downtown buildings, we simply just don't have the parking for certain areas right now. And that's a challenge that I've been working with Ralph and his staff on. So there's multiple things, that's just touching the surface. Does that answer your question, or is it more?
I was just struck that the money went unused, and then I had talked to Eric, and he said, oh, there's lots of challenges with this, some of which you've just identified. It just, I think it's just good for people to understand that the transition takes some time, and while there is some funding available, we're moving in that space, but it is kind of a slog as we go. You just don't, you know, make it happen.
And Julie's role, she will be involved with this quite intimately. So I do expect that we will make headway here as we move forward. I would love to say, I mean, you look at the EV industry in general, right now, it has slowed down a little bit. So, and you remember when I came to you last year, there was an issue of even ordering them, because we were attempting to try and get one ordered in the Environmental Services Department, and you simply, you were on a, like a six or seven-month waiting list. So it is across the board, but I think that the federal government showing commitment is what really helps in having these funds available, and we're going to continue to tap into that even more, so.
Yeah, thank you for the work you're doing there. Just two other things. One is, I just want to highlight the 56%
Yeah.
Number, that's a huge
It is.
Of waste diverted from the landfill. That's just huge. So congra, and that's, a lot of that is due to the work that you are doing, that Michelle is doing it, that staff is doing. So that just doesn't happen. That's a shift in thinking, from the work that you do in a community to, you know, the citizenry saying yes, to putting some effort into diverting that waste. So that's a huge deal, and I just want to compliment you.
Thank you. And I, you know, I want to add to that, because it's something I didn't mention. I've noticed, when I took the role five years ago, we had a lot of people who were at the point of retirement. So we've lost a lot of seasoned individuals over the last five years, and we've brought on very qualified new staff. Here's the great news. I was a little reluctant, like, bringing on new staff and not having that institutional knowledge. The passion of this generation coming in for conservation, environmentalism, and sustainability is just, it's, I can't even put it into words, because it keeps me on my toes. And that's where a lot of these great things are happening, is at the staff level, on both the air quality side and the solid waste side. And you see it in the Policy Committee. So the ideas, I mean, Tony Staubach, Mary Kropenbaker, you know, they're winning awards, national awards. So it's, I, as much as I would love to take credit for these things, the staff is just phenomenal. And that's why I'm so excited. I just, I, you know, I'm about halfway through my career, and I'm looking at the second half, I'm just, I'm, my kids are probably, I'm driving them nuts, because that's all I talk about.
Oh, it's good that you have the energy for it. One last thing. So in the Policy Committee, we talk about some of these grant funds that we give to local communities
Yes.
Give to nonprofits. I just want to say it in front of this board, that that is fairly new, some of those grants. And so I do wonder, with these kinds of numbers and the reduction in waste going to the landfill, if we need to do more there? So I know that takes some money, and what we've invested is $600,000. But I do want to think through whether or not there are some resources. We have a reserve there, and just contemplate as a board, whether or not that's a good direction to go, and especially with some new ideas, new people coming in, maybe there, because it's working. And you just told us that the one with the lawn mowers is oversubscribed.
Yep.
So we know there's a desire and a market for what we're doing, but we have to cut it off, because we don't have the resources to continue. So I just want to plant that seed, something to mull over and to think through. And then, I'm sorry, I do have one last thing. So there is a Sustainability Coordinator in Cuyahoga County.
Okay.
They've been doing this for a while, and, I know, right? But he's, gosh, he's been there, we serve, Commissioner Reese and I served with him in the legislature. His name is Mike Foley, and he left the legislature and then went straight there, and I don't remember what year that was, probably, it's been about 10 years ago. Regardless, he's rocking it up there.
Yeah.
And so it might be worth a conversation, because it's a county organization. And so it's unique that a county has that kind of position, as you say. We're well on the cutting edge of this, but he might be a great resource for some ideas and some input. Thank you.
The other great thing with that is the City of Cincinnati.
Yeah, that's right.
They are a, if you're not aware, they're on the cutting edge of a lot of sustainability initiatives, too, and they are a fantastic partner to have here. So, but yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. And it must feel good to know that your staff and yourself, you're making a difference in the environment, saving money. You can feel it, you can, you see it in the air, the food waste programs that you have, it's just awesome. People should sleep well at night, and your staff knowing that it's really making an impact. I noticed in the presentation, you said there were 60 businesses and schools that started recycling. I would love to get that list and see who those new people are.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And then you talked about young people. I don't know Tony, if he's a young person or not.
He's probably close to my age, so
Yeah. But I remember when he was considering coming to Hamilton County for this purpose, and I would say, no, we need you. Wherever he goes, he makes an impact. So I'm sure he's, you know, a national award. So, and I will be calling him, because I have some ideas as it relates to more, as you mentioned, more food waste, how we can contain it and send out more food to different areas, specifically looking at these professional sports teams and how we, I know the Reds are doing something now, but I will be giving him a call, especially since he's famous and has his award now. So, but thank you all so much, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. And one last thank you, you kind of just made me think of something that, you know, five years ago when I took this role, one of the things I was concerned about is, and I've mentioned this to this board before, is this kind of work, we get paid less than the private industry, but we do, and you hit that key point, we have that passion and that drive to do something for the public that is bigger than us. You don't always get that in a private sector. And this board did a fantastic job, and I know Jeff and the administration, of making us competitive, as competitive as we can be with salaries. And that made a huge difference. Tony's a good example of that. So thank you for being open to that idea and allowing us to bring on those new staff and to retain that staff, too. Because I can honestly tell you that we have retained, in the five years I've been there, I think we've retained all but one employee, and that one employee who left was, they were a transplant from Columbus, and they went back home to Columbus. So we've been very successful in that way. So thank you to the board. All right, well, I will, the excitement is here. I'll introduce Julie. No, no pressure, Julie.
Right.
Yeah, hello, Madam Commissioners. It is wonderful to meet you all. I'm thrilled to be here, thrilled to be a part of the Hamilton County team, and thrilled to be back in the Cincinnati area. As Brad said, I have degrees in environmental science and biology from Miami. Most recently, I have a certificate in climate change and energy from the Harvard Kennedy School, and I've been working prior in Cincinnati, but then most recently down in Kentucky, to really advance climate change adaptation, climate change action, and our impact all across Louisville Metro Government. And so I'm thrilled to be here and both be working across the region with partners throughout the region and collaboration to really elevate the work of Hamilton County and what we're doing for our environments and sustainability, to be working within our operations in the future and making sure that it's sustainable and optimal and efficient. And then, of course, taking on everything that was mentioned in this PowerPoint to really make sure that we are elevating this work and having Hamilton County lead the way. So I'm very excited, and there are indeed very much challenges. These excellent questions are things that I have already been discussing with the Environmental Services team, but there's also a huge opportunity that we have here for climate change in the future and the chance to really make a difference now and for future generations for the health and well-being of our community.
Awesome. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'll open it up, Vice President.
Welcome, guys. Anything? We're thrilled to have you. Glad you're here.
Thank you.
Mr. Dumas? I just like what you said. But at the end, when you said, we have the responsibility for our children and grandchildren to make it a better place, a better environment, so that's our ultimate goal. So it's like you have the energy to kind of help make that happen, so welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you all for supporting this work so much, to be able to create this position and have such, you know, possibility for us to really expand this work.
Great. Awesome. Thank you, I appreciate it. Looks like you did the work already, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the presentation today. I think it's been great. And anybody else has any questions before we close it out? Okay. All right, well, thank you all very much. If there's no further business, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreyhouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.[1581.88]